Let us pray. Father, we're just thankful for the glorious change of weather that we had. And how ironic it is, dear God, that it doesn't matter what situation in life happens to us, there's always a change just around the corner. And that we can't even appreciate the pleasures of life unless we have challenges, pains, and they even enhance the pleasures more. So we pray, dear God, that we will keep everything in perspective. We pray for special members of our city council here and for this beautiful staff, dear God, whose loved ones may be behind the weather or may be suffering, dear God, from various illnesses. I pray, dear God, that you will be with them and give them the courage to continue to do their job in spite of the setbacks that they are suffering. They may be going through the winter of their lives, so let them know that change too is just around the corner. Now, once again, bless this city council, bless its decisions, bless the citizens of Delaware, bless those who put their life on the line, our police force and our firemen and all these selfless folks, our EMS people, bless them all, and bless the city of Dover. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend Henderson. Reverend Dixon, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Our pledge alleges to defy the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, you have it for you this evening's agenda. Are there any additions or deletions?
If not, I'd like to make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We now have before us the consent agenda. Those items on the council agenda which are considered routine and non-controversial are marked with an asterisk and are acted upon by a single rule called vote of council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of council so requests, in which event the matter shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. What is the pleasure of council?
Move for acceptance of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Madam Court? Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Burza?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
This is... Yes, motion carries. We then would go to the item number 2A, public hearing, violation of dangerous building ordinance for property located at 312 West Lockerman Street owned by Renee and Deborah Mrs. Townsend, help us out here.
Ms. Williams, or Ms. President?
Counselman Burza.
Just before you address 2A, I would like to abstain from making any decision or determination on 2A based on a relationship I've had with the prior owner for the past decade or so. And I don't want to influence or sway any opinions of the members of council with what I know.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Townsend.
Thank you. Again, this is property located at 312 West Lockerman Street. It is the property known as My Place Tavern. It's next to the new Family Dollar. We've had five code enforcement cases on this property since 2009, both interior and exterior violations. Utilities were terminated in October 2012. The property was registered as vacant by the city in March of 2009. I believe there was a short period during there where it was occupied because it had closed and then briefly reopened. On November 6, 2014, the city had to hire a contractor to make repairs to the Bilko door. It was very unstable and the concern was that somebody was going to step on it and fall through. We currently have $3,150 in code citations and unpaid vacant building fees. The issue of demolition by neglect is covered in Article 10, Section 3.4 of the zoning ordinance. It relates specifically to properties in the historic district, so before we can bring anything forward, if it's in the historic district zone, to city council for demolition, the Historic District Commission needs to review it under the demolition by neglect provisions. They reviewed this building on February 19. The commission determined that the building is being demolished by neglect and recommended that if significant progress on the repairs is not made by September, that the structure be demolished. So you'll see when we get to the recommendation, we've made a recommendation of September, which is a little atypical, but that's because of the demolition by neglect and the Historic District Commission's interest in allowing the property owner to make repairs. We're bringing it forward under the dangerous building section of the code as unfit for habitation, general welfare, code violations, and unoccupied buildings. And again, we have some pictures from the front. From the rear. And really, when you get into the inside, you can see that there is a lot of deterioration on the inside of the building. You can see the ceiling has no cover on it. It's down to the wood. There's mold throughout the building. Again, more mold. It's a picture of the ceiling, so again, it's very deteriorated on the inside. This is the door had to be boarded because people had tried to get in. So the staff recommendation is that city council declare this building as dangerous and to order that the property be repaired or demolished by September 9. So again, this recommendation gives the owner significant time, but what we didn't want to do was wait six months and then bring it and then kind of go back and forth. So we thought that since the Historic District Commission acted on it, we should bring it to council with the recommendation of September 9. Again, if the owner does not repair or demolish the building within 10 days of that date, that staff would secure the bids and proceed with demolition and recover the cost as stated in the recommendation. With that, I would take any questions?
Mr. Hare?
Building as it stands right now, is it safe, not the inside, but just...
We have no reason to believe that there are structural deficiencies that are going to cause, you know, it's a pretty solid building. It's really just the interior. And we have gotten quite a few complaints from other business owners and patrons of the downtown.
Any other questions from Mrs. Townsend? Seeing none, I would declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of declaring this property dangerous? Again, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of declaring this property Seeing no one, is there anyone who would like to speak against declaring this property Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. What is the pleasure of council?
Move to accept staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Court? Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson? Yes, motion carries unanimously. Item 2, public hearing violation of dangerous building ordinance for property located at 381 Rita Wilma Road owned by Luna Mishu. Again, Mrs. Townsend, would you please brief us on this item?
Okay, thank you. This is property at the end of Rita Wilma Road. This and the next dangerous building that you will look at, there are two trailers owned by different people, but they are on the same lot. So the trailer itself is owned by Luna Mishu. The property is owned by Wilma Mishu. Both parties have been notified. On this particular property, we have 17 code enforcement cases since 2010, a number of exterior code violations. It was used as a rental without a permit. There have been junked cars, work without building permits, numerous grass violations, cars parking on the grass. Utilities were terminated in July. It was condemned by city staff in October because there were open code violations, there were no active utilities, it was not secured, and people were gaining access to the property. The city registered the property as vacant, and there is $1,100 in grass fees and code citations outstanding. We're bringing it forward as unfit for habitation, general welfare, code violations, and unoccupied buildings. Again, this is an exterior. You can see where the skirting is not in place. And that is around the perimeter. So then we get to the interior. I think the bigger violations are related to the outside, and again, that it's been vacant and not secured, and people have been gaining access. So in this case, we are asking that council declare the building dangerous and order that it be repaired or demolished by April 9. And if not done within 10 days of that date, to order staff to proceed with the demolition and to recover the cost as specified. Are there any questions?
It's been vacant how long?
It's been vacant, there was, in July is when we, hold on, let me just look, there were so many dates. So the utilities were terminated in July, so it's been vacant since July, and then it was October when we condemned it and had to secure it or had to have it secured.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of declaring this property dangerous? Again, speak in favor of declaring this property dangerous. Is there anyone who would like to come and speak against declaring this property dangerous? Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
You state your name and address for the record.
My name is Luna Mishu. I'm the only son of the late Dr. Luna and Hattie B. Mishu. Currently, I reside 638 Lakeside Drive, East Stroudsburg, Pennsylvania. I've heard the report tonight, and there are no junk cars, to my knowledge, on the property. You've seen the condition of the property. Even though it is vacant, it doesn't appear to be in any light condition as the previous one. There's no mold, the ceilings are not falling down and that kind of thing. We have had some violations, and we have made attempts to eliminate those violations. Now, let me just fast-forward a little bit, because we're in the midst of cleaning up and cleaning out one of the trailers, and we got it almost ready for rental. And when I, the girl came to bring someone there to look at it, to rent, and it had been boarded. It's been boarded ever since, but it is not in a condition where it cannot be occupied. Of course, all of the electric and everything is turned off, is turned off until we get somebody in there. The other one, we're in the process of cleaning it up, cleaning it out, and then we had a lot of, a lot of the inside content put out, it on the side, we picked up by the Dover garbage people. We were told that they could not pick it up because it was too much. And I'm saying, you know, where do our taxes go? If the city wanted to help out, they could pick up as much as they pick up each week until it's all gone. That did not happen. I tried to contact the dump and get their terms of taking the trash to the dump, and guess what? I never got a return call from them. So we do not, and I mentioned that to the inspector, we do not intend to demolish or get rid of the properties. What I have learned since then is that some family members do not care to have them there. And so since then, I've talked to family members, and we've decided that we are going to move them off the property and onto non-city-owned property. This property is privately owned. These trailers are privately owned, it's on private property, and it does not pose the threat to the public that the code refers to. And I would ask this honorable, esteemed body to bear with us, give us an opportunity to remove them from the property, especially if we can't get the cooperation to, from the city, to move the garbage and clear up so we can rent them. That is our final intent, to rent these properties. And I ask your assistance and your help and your cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I had some notes, but I decided not to use them.
Mr. Mishu, can I?
Yes, you may.
If, in fact, if that happens and you're given, when are you going to physically do something to address the concerns that made by the city?
Well, we were about to rent it, and when the girl took the person who wanted to rent it to see it, that's when we discovered the boards on the property. So, you know, and then we got caught up in all the winter weather and the snow and that kind of thing. But we're not realizing any income, and as soon as we can get these in rental shape, I can't say today or tomorrow, but that's our intent, we do intend to get them in rental shape so that we can continue. We've tried to comply with all your rules and regulations, and it is difficult, it's costly, but I don't see the wisdom of spending $300 to remove the trash when it could be going into the trailers and when the city does have a trash service. So we're doing the best that we can. I can tell you, but our intent is not to lose the trailers. We want to shape them up and rent them out. As far as a specific date, I can't tell you at this time, but we are trying to do that, and we are talking to some people about moving them.
Mr. Hare?
Have you given any thought to the $1,100 in outstanding citations?
I'm just hearing about that tonight.
So no one knew about it?
I'm not sure the citation was on the building or the...
$1,100, it says there's $1,100 in outstanding grass fees and code violations.
Mrs. Townsend?
The citations, I'm just looking at the file, the citations are from 2012 and 2013, and they were issued to and mailed by certified mail to Mr. Mishu.
Like I said, I'm just hearing about this tonight. I would be glad to entertain some arrangement, but I'm just hearing about that tonight.
How much more time would you need to bring these up to code and get them ready?
I think the weather is turning now. I would say 30 to 60 days.
So another 30 days on top of the 30 would be, that'd be 60 days, that would take you to May, into May, May 9?
That would work, yeah.
Are there any other questions by council members? Thank you, Mr. Mishu.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Burza.
Mr. Mishu, from a, you had indicated several times that your ability to repair the property is contingent on having renters in the property. Are you going to be able to make repairs and improvements to the condition of the property unless there is a renter? Is that a condition on you making those repairs?
We do need the rental income, but I know there's some things we need to do prior to, which will be...
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just... There was a housing inspection performed in May 2012, and there was a list of things that needed to be corrected, and that went, the reason there were citations associated with that particular case is because that went to fifth notice and no follow-up inspection was scheduled. So there is a list of documented violations. I would assume that there are probably additional violations that would need to be addressed.
Once we get out of the closing, my first question back to the city is going to be is, is the condition of the premises permit a renter at this point?
No.
You can't put a renter in there to make repair, produce revenue, to make repairs, so there's going to be a problem.
I think one, yes.
Well, this one, 381.
Mr. Mishu, could you speak into the mic? The clerk is having a hard time.
The property, the 383 will be discussed next on the agenda. 381, the code enforcement case paperwork indicates that in March of 2013, we were moving towards suspension of the rental permit because the violations had not been corrected. So at this point, we would need any existing violations cleared before we could issue a rental permit.
Okay, thank you.
I thought we were talking about both properties at the same time.
We're talking about 381, and then 383 is a separate item on the agenda, because they're owned by separate parties.
I'm representing both.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak against declaring this property dangerous? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. What is the pleasure of council?
I make a recommendation that we give them until May 9 to bring the property up to code and pass inspection. If it's not by May 9, then proceed with staff recommendation.
A second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Mr. Burza?
Can I ask a question? Does that satisfy the planning department?
Yes.
Given the weather conditions and...
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I was just going by what the gentleman said.
Right.
May would work.
That's fine.
Any further discussion? Madam Court? Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Burza?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson? Yes, motion carries, your name is...
Point of order. That gentleman with his hand up in the audience.
We're not in public hearing anymore, sir. You can get up and speak at the next property, public.
Just the same question.
Hold on, Mr. Anderson. Please, yeah, please come forward.
I just want to know, how did this property's condition come to the notice of the council?
It was brought forward by the code enforcement staff because of the violations on the property.
But I said, how does that happen?
We do inspections of rental properties on a routine basis, and there was a list of violations that hadn't been corrected, and the owner was unresponsive, and then when it was vacant, people were gaining access to the property, it was not secure, so it became on our dangerous building list.
So how would that happen if it wasn't...
We're not, we're not at this, at this point in time, sir. We're not able to answer all these questions. I'm sure after the meeting, Mrs. Townsend can answer these questions for you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. We're going to go on now to item number 2C, public hearing violation of dangerous building ordinance for property located at 383 Rita Wilma Road owned by Johnny D. Brooker and Anya K. Mishu Brooker. Mrs. Townsend?
Okay, thank you. Again, this is a situation, this is, this prop, this trailer is located on the same lot as the previous structure. The lot is owned by Wilma Mishu, and the trailer, again, is owned by the Brookers, as you stated. In this case, we have had 10 code enforcement cases since 2010, both interior and exterior code violations, electric disconnects, no rental agent. If you, if you have a rental property, you're required to have a local agent that we can contact if we need to contact somebody. Tall grass violations, parking on the grass. Utilities were terminated in December 2013. It was condemned again in October of 2014, just as the other unit was, due to no utilities, open code violation cases, broken doors, and people gaining access to the property. And again, I think you know, from previous experience, people gaining access to a vacant property tends to kind of raise it on our radar in terms of a property that needs to be addressed. In this case, we have $550 in grass citations and vacant building fees. We're bringing it forward under the same dangerous building definitions as the prior one, unfit for habitation, general welfare, code violations, unoccupied buildings. An exterior shot. Again, this is one, the skirting has been damaged. And then the interior of this one is, I would say, markedly worse than the other structure we just looked at. So again, the staff's recommendation is to declare the building on the property dangerous, to order it to be repaired or demolished by April 9. Again, if you want to keep them both on the same schedule, May 9 would be satisfactory as well. And that if not repaired or demolished within 10 days of the date set by council, that staff would proceed with the demolition and proceed as stated to recover any costs. So with that, I would take any questions.
Thank you. Madam President, is this property was recently changed ownership, did it not?
I am not...
I'm not sure when the, when the property changed ownership. I have the current owner information.
Because it had one owner up there and one, in a different, on our slides, and a different owner that you mentioned, and I believe there was inheritance in that case?
Okay, the family could better speak to that issue. What we have down is that the owners of record of the unit are the Brookers, and the land is owned by Wilma... What we have down is that the owners of record of the unit are the Brookers, and the, the land is owned by Wilma Mishu.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Any other questions by members of council, from Mrs. Townsend?
All right. So all the fees on this property are up to date?
There's five hundred fifty dollars outstanding. Other than that, yes.
Thank you.
Now declare the public hearing again open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of declaring this property dangerous? Again, in favor. This is in favor of declaring it dangerous.
I understand.
Okay. Please come forward and give us your name for, and address for the rec.
My name is Roy Soller Jr., three five three, Rita Wilma Road, the son of Dr. Wilma Mishu. I'm here tonight representing her interests. I have just a few questions. First question is, if these violations have not been satisfied and cured, who would be responsible for the fees? Would it be the property owner or the individual who owns the unit? Could you answer that for me, Ms. Townsend?
Any, any of the fees that are leanable, I believe, would be attached to the property. So vacant building fees and, and grass fees would be attached to the property.
Okay. I understand that my uncle, Louis Mishu II, has said that he's going to move the trailers. Would that be, since he's going to move the trailers, would there be a need for the violations to be cured by, by, for the May ninth? Or just a need from him to when he's going to move the unit?
That cures the violations.
If, if the units are moved, then that cures the violations, unless they're placed somewhere else in the city, and then?
Okay, right. I, I don't think I heard him specify when he decided to move the units, because we are not interested in providing any lot agreements. And if there's not a lot agreement, I understand according to the code, that then it cannot be a rental permit submitted, correct?
That tends to be a, a private issue. We don't get into the, the dealings between the property owner and the unit owners. I know there are a number of places where that is the case, but we, we can't not issue a rental permit based?
I think it's, I'm sorry, but I think it's in the municipal code that it specifies that the, the trailer park or mobile homeowner has to have a, like a directory or record of anyone that has a permit on their lot, and so that the city can review it. And that will be part of requirements for the permit. That's just what I read, I may have missed.
Okay, and that, that may be the case. We don't have as many mobile homes, so I would have to look at the code to?
Thank you very much, that's what the question asked. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soller. Is there anyone else who would like to, hold on, sir, to speak in favor of having this property declared as dangerous? Is there anyone who'd like to come forward to speak against having this property declared dangerous? Mr. Mishu?
Thank you. Address Mr. Soller's question. I did not say specifically by when they would be moved, but I did say that when they are moved, they would not be on to city property. They won't be on private, private property. They would be out of the city of Dover. I hope that is understood. With regard to three eighty-three, it's a slightly different situation. The people left the property. They left their, their content there, and we had to go to court, get a court order, to go in and clear up the content of the property. That took some time. It took a long time, longer than we expected. But we did get the court order, and we did go in and clean up that property. That's the, that's the big collection of mess that's out there now that has not been picked up. And, and, and I would, I would urge that the city pick up as much as they are allowed to pick up each week until they get it all. The, I guess the rest of, of the conditions, as the other place, apply to this. But as you can see, there's no mold, there's no structural damage there. The place was entered by, I would assume, some, some homeless people. I don't know.
Actually, it was the previous owners. They were, I assume they were stashing drugs, but I'm not too sure. I can see.
Well, I don't, I don't know anything.
We went ahead and we, we already paid for the trash to be picked up, so the trash is already gone, it's not a issue.
Okay. But that, those, those were the, the issues involved with that particular unit. And I would ask your cooperation with this unit also.
Mr. Hare?
Is another thirty days enough?
Yes.
So the same as the other one, May ninth would be okay?
Yes.
So you'll either have those properties up to whatever it needs to be, or moved to the other lot that you?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Mishu? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to speak against having this property declared dangerous? Seeing none, I declare the, the public hearing closed. What is the pleasure of counsel? Mr. Hare?
I recommend we extend it to May ninth, as we did the previous one.
A second. Mr. Dixon, seconds. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clark? Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Persis?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries unanimously. We're now on item three, special counsel meeting minutes, February nineteenth, two thousand fifteen. Special counsel meeting was held on February nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, to consider reorganization of the city of Dover. At the conclusion of this meeting, council set a public hearing for this evening to take place, to take public comment on options A, B, and C, which were put forward by the Legislative Finance and Administration Committee, and option D, which was put forward by Councilman Hutchinson. I would request that Councilman Slaven, the chair of the Legislative Finance and Administration, is going to brief us on this item. Mr. Slaven?
Thank you, Council President, Acting Council President. You have before you an issue that has been pinging around our various forms of government here since at least May of last year. Okay? We've had separate actions and, and motions passed about how we want to approach this four separate times by council, and six separate times by Legislative Finance and Administration Committee. Finally, the Legislative Finance and Administration Committee made the decision to pass the matter on without recommendation to bring it to full counsel for the resolution that's before you. I won't suggest the course of action you have to take before you, but if, if the question is whether we want to change the form of government, the critical, the two critical pieces to it. One is, to what form of government? And then, second is, what is the process by which we do that? It's my understanding that a single vote tonight will not change the form of government, that there's an awful lot of backwork that has to be done. For instance, there are at least fifteen references in the charter to the duties of the mayor. There are at least another fifteen ordinances that would have to be amended, and each of those require time to, to work through the process, to get through. So, it's left at your feet for, for the pleasure of counsel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slaven. Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Slaven? Councilman Hutchinson?
Well, I, I think as, as we take a look at this issue, and yes, it's true, we've been talking about it, but when I look at the concerns about control of the city, better accountability, I look at the operations, I look at expenses, personnel issues, budget concerns, income, and labor contracts. And when you look at all those matters in the structure of the city, and you look at all the departments we have in the city, I think when we look at the city manager, the city manager, he or she, in this case, he, is chosen based upon his education, his knowledge, his training, to be able to oversee and manage a city. He is directly responsible for the budget. He is responsible for the budget. When I look at the city, the question is, if the city manager was to be the person that all departments within the city reports to, and then the city manager would report to, one, council, or two, the mayor. And I think it's critical that we decide where we want to go with this. I think it's critical that we have a boss, one person, that can manage and oversee. That's what we pay the city manager for. The nice thing about the city manager, he works at the pleasure of the council. He's based upon performance. An elected official, if they make a mistake, so be it. But you can't farm. I am looking at, when I look at the future of this city, it is getting harder and harder to manage a city. And even as good as we are, we make mistakes. And unfortunately, when we make mistakes, it costs us money. And I'm just saying to you, at this time, when I look at the city itself, I think we have an absolute opportunity, and even more so, a responsibility, to address this issue. And when I look at all departments within the city, and there's only two that would be accepted, acceptable, and that is the finance department, the city clerk's office, who work directly for the council. But every other department within the city would report to the city manager, who then would report to who? The mayor, or report to the council itself. And I think those are the things that we need to consider. But I also feel very strongly, we need to stop talking about it, and need to move forward with this. Thank you.
I have, I have the choice here of moving straight into the public hearing or entertaining more comments from direct council members. What's the pleasure of counsel? Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. It's not news that we go into the public hearing and discuss afterwards.
I'm sorry, sir, we're getting ready to go into public hearing. You could talk then.
I just want to be first.
Well, you, there's a sign-up sheet. You have to be on the sign-up sheet. I'll, I will.
President, the folks in the audience say they can't hear.
You can't hear? You can't hear who?
Can't hear either one of you. You need to speak a little louder.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Yes. Is there, I will, I will now call the public hearing to order. The first person on our list is Mr. George, excuse me, Mr. George Claudioso from one sixty-seven Maple Glen Road. Mr. Claudioso?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. God, they're giving me my voice is giving me a little trouble. I appreciate the opportunity to address the council in public on this issue, because I really feel it's a very important issue that's going to affect, affect the growth and the destiny of this city. I'd like to say that I am in support of option D. In general, I believe it will serve the needs of the citizens of Dover and the city council, both for the present and moving forward into the future. Initially, there are five important points I would like to make about this. First, it is operationally efficient, the way it's set up. I don't totally agree with the way it's done, but I agree primarily with most of it. This operating structure has most of the city's departments, as pointed out with, by Mr. Hutchinson, with the exception of the, the city controller and the city clerk, reporting directly to a professionally trained, trained city operating officer. In today's operating environment, we need someone in charge who knows how to deal with the challenges to and intricacies of today's municipal government. Second, it is cost-effective. The development of various departments' budget requests will be formulated and overseen by the city manager, and he will ultimately be responsible for seeing that expenditures fall within their eventual allotted amounts. Also, with one person in charge, it is a lot easier to evaluate, meet, and control the staffing needs, equipment, and ancillary needs of the various departments in the municipal government. Third, and this is an important one, there is accountability, direct accountability. If the citizens and/or the city council feel that the city manager is negligent in performing his duties, the city council may remove him. You don't have to wait for the next election to, to roll around. It can be done, so long as due process is followed, it can be done relatively quickly. Fourth, and this was an issue that I came across and I wanted to address, a city manager is accessible. Apparently, there was, there was a little bit of confusion about being able to personally contact the city manager. And I can tell you from personal experience with, acting in my homeowners association, we have had numerous contacts with the city manager, and the city manager has helped us to solve several problems within our community. Matter of fact, we have one going on at the moon.
Mr. Claudioso?
Yes, ma'am.
Your three minutes, your three minutes is expired.
Oh, I'm sorry, could I just get the last part of this?
Can you wrap it up? Sure.
Okay. Fifth, and I think this is important, it gives each city council member greater influence over how the city operates. And a lot of people don't realize that about a city council, city manager, form of government. Since the city manager answers directly to city council, each city council member, through the power of his or her vote, can ensure that his or her district is receiving the service it duly deserves.
Thank you, sir.
Now, I was going to go into about the mayor and everything, but fortunately, I'm out of time.
Can you, can you let us have those written statements?
I will. I made one error in typing them, and I found it when I was sitting there reading it. So I will make a copy of that.
Thank you, sir. The next person on the lease, on the list is Mr. Gene Ruane. Mr. Ruane, would you come to the podium, please?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm Gene Ruane, one twenty-two Shadow Court. I've got some opening remarks about the importance of maintaining this city as a former government with the council management, but since I heard the discussion about appointing the city manager, I better go to that first before I run out of time. I understand it's one of the changes you're considering. I think it's a terrible idea. The appointing authority for the city manager's position in the Dover Charter rests with the nine-person council rather than with a single individual such as the mayor. This is standard practice in council management, council manager cities, and for good reason. First of all, it's important to preserve the principle that the manager's office is a non-political one. a nonpolitical one, which does not change with the new mayor. If the mayor selected the city manager, a political expectation would be created that a new mayor should pick his or own city manager, see his or her own manager. The reputation that the city is a good place for managers to work would be tarnished right away, and the best candidates would not come to Dover. Moreover, the chances of having a more objective evaluation of a candidate for the city manager position, and for evaluating the effectiveness of a manager once hired, is greater than if only a single individual has the sole power of judgment. There are also other negative consequences that would be produced in Dover's government if the city manager were made subordinate to the mayor. Greater separation of powers between the mayor and council would develop, together with greater conflict and increased resistance to a mayor's personal agenda from the council, as they may very well agree, not agree, with his or her policy directions. And there will be significant ambiguity in the lines of authority between each set of elected officials and the manager. The advantages of cooperative relationships between elected and professional leadership would be jeopardized, while the professional independence of the manager will be compromised, as he or she may be expected to act as the mayor's agent, rather than serving the entire council. A mayor who has such authority over a city manager may ignore the team-building aspect of his or her position, and become someone who uses the position of the city manager to push a personal agenda, ignoring the council. Giving the mayor such authority over the city manager could also have the effect of diminishing the influence of Dover's more representative district-based council that was created to ensure representation from all neighborhoods, and especially minority Now to the whole issue of the total form of government.
You're right on the mark, Mr. Ruane.
Right on the mark. I just got my main point done.
I know, but you got it in.
I'm going to request that my entire statement be submitted to the record, please.
Yes, sir, we will. The next person on the list is Ms. Bonnie Meeks. Ms. Meeks?
I'm Bonnie Meeks of 301 North Bradford Street. I want to pass to Sarah Herbert, who will represent ours as a whole.
Please state your name and your address and organization.
Yes. It's Sarah Herbert, 223 North Bradford Street, Dover, Delaware. And we're basically neighbors who think the same and thought it'd be easier for one person to do this. Do you want their names and addresses, too?
No, we're fine.
Okay. The group behind me support the following, and we're taking this based on the March 4th newspaper article. We support a full-time mayor because the city is growing and the mayor should be the face of the city. Thriving cities have involved full-time, have involved in full-time mayors. The mayor being in charge of the police department's day-to-day activities, and we said day-to-day activities, is supported by us. An elected official can be more directly held accountable by the citizens for the handling of our concerns. It's easier to have a continuing conversation when it's necessary, and we're more likely to have follow-up in a reasonable time if we have an elected official. We're really uncomfortable with our concerns floating through the city government bureaucracy. We feel that that probably isn't going to be the best way. A special committee, we do support the idea of a special committee to select a police chief, and the idea of the mayor only being able to fire the chief with the support of at least two-thirds of the council. We feel that expanding the search for a police chief outside the department will provide a wider choice of eligible candidates, but it should not deny an in-house choice when appropriate. And our final thing is that we do agree that clarifying the time of city elections and special elections, when a council person vacancy comes, is really needed and needs to be acted upon. Thank you.
The fourth person on our list was Mr. Meeks, and I assume that was taken care of him.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. The next person, Mr. Alan Simpson. Mr. Simpson?
I apologize, I said I would like to sign up chief. Excuse me, I just saw you just signed up.
Thank you. Mr. Fred Neal is next. Mr. Neal?
I echo the gentleman's remarks. I can't learn a thing when I'm talking.
Thank you, sir. The next person on our list is Sarah Herbert.
I've been there.
All right. Mr. Mischu, Mr. Luna Mischu. He may have been for the other, right. And Mr. Phil McDonald.
Can I speak from here, miss?
No. We need to get you on the mic, I'm sorry.
All right. Just tell the fellow that this came. Folks came up here, if I'd known they were coming, they would have saved me a trip, really. But I'm Phil McDonald, Sr., 907 Townsend Boulevard, Dover, Delaware, 19901. I just wrote a piece in the paper, maybe some of you folks read it. My primary interest here is to keep things pretty much as they are. I'm very much appreciative of an elected official being a mayor, being the face of the city, being the authority of the city, working with city council. I think that Mr. Christensen and the former mayor would be two good people that I could vote for either one of them coming in. I don't want to be personal tonight. I wrote my article, and I stand by it. I think there's a power grab going on here. And another thing, as far as running the city, I think we're a wash in cash here. Now, I'm sure that some people agree, some people will not agree. The people handling the money probably will agree with me. As far as the police are concerned, I want the mayor in charge of the police. When I make a telephone call and the police don't come, and they give me an answer when they'll be there, past the time that they should be there, I want to call the mayor, I want to call an elected official, and I want to have somebody be accountable for I had a lot of dealing with you folks. Some of you I know personally. Some of you have been to my house. And I'd just like for you to know that what I have said and what I've written is what I stand for. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. The mayor, Mr. Robin Christensen, was also asked to speak. And Mr. Sutler, do you want to be placed on the list?
Debut is fine.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, would you give pardon to Mr. Sutler?
I yield to the citizens.
Roy Sutler, 353 Wido Memorial Road, Dover, Delaware. I believe that we're going to continue to have a full-time mayor with a title of chief executive officer. I believe that the mayor needs to be a strong mayor, council, form of government. And the reason why I believe that is because I believe that the city manager and the mayor could have a closer relationship, whereas the mayor can better inform his constituents, his or her constituents of City of Dover, as to the strengths, the weaknesses, and the opportunities and threats of this city when they go to advocate city business or other agencies coming to the City of Dover. I believe that it needs to be more cohesion between city council and the mayor, so it won't be a power struggle. And I believe that constituents would find it to be a little bit more, I would say, a better relationship, or feel better with getting things done within the city, if they have one person that they could talk to. I believe that the city manager does a great job, but the mayor, having that title, should be the focal point of city activity and compliance. I believe that the mayor deserves to have a little bit more duties, powers, and responsibilities in the City of Dover, especially if they're going to be viewed as the person that's going to be held accountable. Basically, that's it. I want to say thank you for the opportunity, and I believe that we need a strong mayor, city council, form of government. Thank you.
Mr. Sutler.
Would you like to yield to a question?
Absolutely.
All right. Mr. Sutler, what does Trenton, Harrisburg, Annapolis, and Salisbury all have in common when it comes to former government?
I do believe a strong mayor, form of government.
That's correct.
Thank you.
They're all around the same size, and Harrisburg was found to be one of the top-ten cities of the size to live in. Is that correct?
Correct, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sutler.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to come forward?
I have a question. Can I do that?
We still are in the middle of the hearing, listening to what people. If you want to ask a question of a candidate, of one of the speakers, is that what you want to do?
No, I want to ask a question about comment. It's a comment about this voting and the timing, et cetera.
Sure. Come on in. Please state your name and your address.
My name is Janice Gaddis. I live at 448 North State Street. I can't understand the timing of this, and I wonder if you would please clarify. You can't vote on it tonight, and we have an election coming up, and I would like to comment that I don't think this should be dealt with before the election at all. And I don't know if you table things, I don't really know how it works, but I'm not, I don't think I'm the only one in this audience who's a little confused by what you're saying as far as whether you can vote tonight or whether you can't. So I would think that that should be clarified, and I do think we need a strong mayor. He is elected by all of us. None of you are. And that's a personal relationship, particularly with the police department. That's the most personal thing that happens here, and I want to know the man who's doing this, and I want to have some say in who it is. So if you could clarify the other, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hutchinson.
I'd just like to say that one of the things everybody needs to focus on as you look at the city, as we look at the organization and how we want to look like in the future, no matter what happens, everything we would, if we were going to make change, would have to go before the General Assembly for change. So nothing here is going to happen in the next week, month, or what, it takes time. But I think that your question is a valid question, but when I look at the city, and first, I've had the opportunity to personally serve this city as police chief. I've also had the opportunity to serve as a part-time mayor, and I had the opportunity to serve as a full-time mayor. I absolutely believe we need a full-time mayor. That's not an issue. But there is a difference today of what the mayor's duties and responsibilities are as it used to be. I remember when the mayor sat up there, presiding over council, when the mayor made all appointments on council, when the mayor had a vote, when there was only eight members of council, not nine, and the mayor served as the chief executive officer, and the mayor was chairman of the board. The mayor was here. The mayor had authority. But please understand, that has all changed. The mayor no longer presides over the council. The most powerful elected person in city government today is the council president, because the mayor doesn't have the authority anymore to reside over the council, doesn't have the authority to make council appointments. So when you look at the organization structure of the city, I am a huge supporter of the mayor. And quite frankly, if I could wave a magic wand, I'd put the mayor back up there where he belongs. That's my personal opinion. Thank you.
I believe Mayor Christensen will respond. Your turn.
Thank you, Madam President. I want everybody to understand, before I begin my dissertation, I'm not up here campaigning, so in fairness to the other folks that are running. But it is my firm belief that 1983, I'll give you a little bit of history, I asked the question when I ran for city council, what does Dover want to be when it grows up? And here we are, 32 years later, still batting around the question, what does Dover want to be when we grow up? I know that I want Dover to be a thriving city with job opportunities and a place for everyone to live. And I believe that the mayor should be the chief executive officer of the city with the safeguard of a professional city manager, chosen Councilman Ruane by the members of council. That way, you have a safety, a safeguard. I think that it's important that the mayor continue being involved in the day-to-day operations of the police department, not setting policy, but making sure that the public is served in the way that they have come to expect, and that public safety is job one by the mayor, and safe public safety from one end of the city to the other is his first responsibility. I believe that there is room for the city manager and the mayor to work together, formulating the budgets. I believe it's the responsibility of the mayor to look out for the public, again, from square one, and that's in the budget process. But I do believe that the mayor should not be involved in the legislative process. First off, because of the consent decree that was handed down so many years ago, and also, the mayor does not belong in the legislative process to maintain the validity of his veto, which is another safeguard for the public. I have no greater respect for anyone in this chamber than my friend, Councilman Hutchinson. And I believe he is incorrect in some of his assumptions, but I believe it's not the direction for the city to step back into the past and put the mayor back in the council chamber. And I respect and I understand where a lot of the members of this council's concerns come from, over issues that occurred before I got here, and the dollars and cents that it costs the taxpayers. But that's an issue in the past to be addressed at a later date. If we choose to change the form of government that we have, it should not be a knee-jerk reaction, and we should place not names of individuals that might serve or have served or will serve this city, we need to use the variables X, Y, and Z, because all of us in this council chamber, with the exception of Councilman Persa, will be gone, gone, as this city continues to grow. And I wish every member of council would consider that as you deliberate these changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure of council? Mr. Hare.
I just want to make a few comments. One, the young lady that spoke and said she didn't think it should be a decision made before this election, I just wanted to clarify that. You mean this election or the two years from now election? Because I don't think you have to worry a darn thing about this election.
I just needed to clarify.
Yeah. Oh. I would worry more about the election in two years, if we even have a decision by then. I have no, I have talked to a gentleman early this evening, and I think we should have a full-time mayor. In 1997, when I was on council and we made that decision to go to a full-time mayor, the mayor's responsibility were to be the face of the city, to be there, to be the economic development arm of the city, working with the city manager, and even now, assistant city manager, work with the legislator, legislature, for things that would happen for the city, and even be our public relations person. happen for the city, and even be our public relations person. Regardless of who the police department answers to, the mayor will always be there for concerns. When you have a situation, you have a professional city manager, as, and I agree with Mr. Wayne, will be hired, and his determination to hire or fire will be done by council, not by one person, I agree with that. But if you're not gonna let him be responsible for the budget and the expenditures of the whole city, then why do we have him? We have two very qualified people that are only really responsible for just over half of the city. Everyone says, well, they can do the budget. Well, if the other half of the city doesn't like the budget that's proposed, they go around him and go to their boss, which is the mayor, and it has happened. So, if you wanna, if, I think the city needs to report to the city manager, with the exception of the finance director at the city clerk's office, and then if we wanna have that strong mayor, then the city manager, just like in Wilmington, they have a strong mayor, but the city manager who are up there is called, uh, chief administrator, reports to the mayor. Everyone else reports to the chief administrator, nobody goes directly to the mayor, except the city manager. That would work. I don't know that we need to have the mayor back in chambers, that, I don't know, I think a full-time mayor is there, and like I said, the face of the city, the economic arm of the city, there's a lot of positions in, could be discussed, but the city manager needs to have control over the whole city, and he reports to the mayor if we wanna do it that way. You can't have finances going different directions and holding one man responsible for it when he's not responsible for it, doesn't make any sense. You wouldn't run a business that way, so why would you wanna run the city that way? Thank you.
Is that, is that a motion, Mr. Hare?
That's a comment.
Are there any other comments from council members?
Mr. Hare made that a motion, I second it.
All right, well, that's my motion, then.
All right. Ballot motion.
Yes, Mr. Hare, state the motion, please.
Kinda like what Mr. Neal said, I can't, I can't make up-
In about ten or fifteen words.
The city, we, we continue with a full-time mayor who is the chief executive, all the departments in the city, with the exception of the finance office, assessor's office, and the city clerk's office, report to the city manager, the chief operating officer. The city manager will then report to the mayor. There's, the mayor has no per, per se responsibility over any individual office, if he has an issue here, you and the city manager will deal with it, and then they'll, together, it'll be done, but there's no, everything is the responsibility of the city manager. So if, this, I don't wanna get back into comments.
I, I dare, again, what is the motion? I, I don't-
The city manager become-
What is, what is the motion?
The city manager is responsible for the running of the city, and he reports to the mayor, everyone else reports to the city manager. And the mayor, mayor remains full-time and is, becomes the economic, he remains full-time.
Let's get this clear, though. Madam Clerk, what did you hear?
I heard that the, the mayor will continue to be full-time, he'll be the chief executive of the city, all departments, with the exception of the city clerk's office and the finance department, will report to the city manager, and the city manager will report to the mayor.
The city manager will report to the mayor?
He'll be the mayor's-
The mayor and council, right?
Mayor and coun- he'll be the mayor's assistant, more or less, but responsible for the city report-
I guess we need a second before we have this.
We gotta have a, is there a second to this motion? Mr. Anderson? This discussion on the motion, Mr. Hutchinson?
Just a point of concern, I think that everybody needs to understand, the mayor has total control as far as the police department. All other departments come under the city manager.
Yes. That wasn't a motion.
That wasn't Mr. Hare's-
But that's a charter. That's by charter.
Okay, but with the motion, we're gonna have to, like Mr. Slavin said, we'll have to go into the charter, there's gonna be a lot of changes.
Okay.
It's in something that's gonna happen tonight, it's just gonna be a recommendation, and then we'll have to go in and change a lot of little bits and things.
Mr. Persa?
Is everybody done?
No, not quite.
All right, here's what I heard. I heard comments from George, Gene, Sarah, Phil, Roy, Janice, the mayor, members of council, with a lot of different ideas. I think there is a lot of synthesis in the ideas, and that a lot of the comments were similar, were looking for ways of safeguarding the public's interest, ways of making the city more efficient, uh, and protecting mistakes that we've made in the past. I like public hearings, when we have big issues like this that affect the city for potentially the next generation, I think it's important that we get this right. I, I'd be hesitant on making any kind of motion or vote tonight on anything until we've had a chance to sit down and think about all the comments that were made by the public, and read all the comments that were made by members of the public who submitted written comments. Um, and Mr. Wayne, I have a lot of respect for, he's been a member of this body for probably since I was a kid, I would be interested in reading what he had to say in his comments, cause he only addressed one area of them, which is a difficulty and a challenge you have in three minutes. Um, same thing with Mr., uh, George, Ami- Amicio?
What is that?
I packed up the name, but I, I would like to read those comments. Public hearings, I think, are good, it, they kinda crystallize and clarify the different arguments, I think we're seeing there's two sides to this debate that's gonna go on, and I don't wanna force a vote tonight. Um, I, I mean, I, I enjoy kind of synthesizing this and trying to piece it together, and I think it's something that can be done with some reasonable, uh, period of time, it does not need to take two years, it doesn't need to take another year, but the comments are helpful, hearing it from the public. We can talk all day amongst ourselves and convince ourselves that we all think it's right, until we hear how it impacts people that live in the community, I think that's important. So, based on that, I would be real hesitant on making any kind of motion or making any kind of decisions tonight. I don't know if we have a timetable tonight, I'm not even sure we have to table it and send it back to a committee, cause, yeah, I, I don't know if that's it, but I think we need some time to think, consider, and turn the comments into something that, that can be articulately expressed to the people of Dover. And whether that falls into the upcoming election or not, if, if we can synthesize it into option A and option B, and do it in time for the April election, so we get some feedback from people based on who's running and what options everybody supports, I think this is useful for that process. But I'd be real hesitant on voting on anything tonight, locking us into something that we haven't fully vetted yet. So, that's what I think, I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves, but I think we're on the right track, this is the conversation we need to have, but I'm not sure I feel comfortable voting on this until I've read the information that the public-
Mr. Persa, are you, are you asking, uh, Councilman Hare to withdraw the motion?
That was an awfully long motion. Parts of it I agree with.
Well, gee, I think we need to vet it some more.
Well-
We've only vetted this thing for thirty-two years, I mean, what's another three or four years? I mean, why not?
I'm not telling him to withdraw the motion.
Let's just ask some peo- more people what they wanna do.
That's what I think we should-
We're not here to make decisions.
Hang on, Mr. Hare. Mr. Slavin?
Uh, thank you. Um, you know, in, just in, in response to Mr. Hare's comment about the vetting, one of the, one of the parts of all this that has given me heartburn is that the process that we've gone through appears to be kind of an inside process. It's been primarily committee hearings that are stuck in right before the council meetings, there, it's items that appear on the council agendas, it's a special council meeting that's held in a conference room on a Wednesday night, I, I do think there is a more public vetting, and, you know, to your comment about having to listen to more people, yeah, I'm all for it. So, I guess we're in agreement on that, I, I don't know if you're being sarcastic about it or not. There are other parts that give me heartburn about the process. One is, I think we, we need to respect the balance of power that exists in all forms of government in, in, in this country, and we need to make sure that's ensured, as I mentioned about the process. Uh, we have complained about the hybrid form of government we have, and it appears to me that our answer to that is to create another hybrid form of government. Um, and, you know, if this is a decision that we're making with, you know, how, how would business run a government, business would provide some kind of fiscal analysis, wouldn't it? Wouldn't it tell us what the full costs of this are going to be? Because I, I guarantee you, it's going to cost something. I'm not afraid of the cost, within reason, but it's going to cost something. We, we heard from the city manager that he currently supervises two-hundred-and-fifty plus or minus?
Two, two-thirties, somewhere.
Right, and if the police department were to report to you, that number would more than double. Okay? It stands to reason that, that those things are gonna have cost drivers on it. I, I agree with Mr. Persa on two points. One is, I think we're on the right track, I don't think we're anywhere near, um, making a decision at this point, I, I think the one thing we can say is, we're probably unanimous in the confusion that we've created for voters, and for that, I apologize. But let's remember that at the end of the day, it's about what our constituents want in a city government, okay? And I have to believe in the many conversations I've had and the people that I've, I've listened to, um, what they want is, they want safe neighborhoods, they want safe streets, they want their trash picked up, they want their snow plowed, okay? They want roads that work, they want libraries and parks that are accessible, they want the flowers planted, they want the streetlights to work, all right? How we get there is maybe not the number-one issue for them, we've let it become the number-one issue for us, and I think we may be missing some bigger things while we talk about this. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Slavin. Any other comments from council members? Mr. Hare?
I do really think the only issues that we have is, do we wanna have a full-time mayor? Yes, I make that motion, we have a full-time mayor. Do we wanna have a split in who reports to who in city government? Or do we wanna have everybody reporting to the city manager, which, let's not, if we're gonna, if we're not gonna have everyone in this city report to him, let's not call him a city manager, let's just call him a electric, uh, planning office department manager or something. If he's a city manager, then he manages the city, and he reports, as they do in Wilmington, he reports to the mayor. So, I don't think whether we want a full-time or part-time mayor is an issue, I think we want a full-time mayor. Now, it's a matter, do we wanna split the responsibilities? If we do that, then the city manager doesn't report to the mayor at all, for his management of his half of the city, he, he reports to council, that's it. He manages, doesn't matter what the mayor says, because he's not responsible for that half of the city. And the police department can report to the mayor, and he's responsible for that, and the city manager then would no longer be responsible for the budget of the police department. So I think the only thing we're talking about is full-time mayor, part-time mayor. Does everybody in the city report to the city manager who then reports to the mayor? That's it. That's the basic issues. Either we wanna do it that way, or we don't wanna do it that way.
Any other comments from council members? We have a motion on the floor? Madam Clerk?
At the sake of being redundant, can we have the motion repeated, so we know-
Oh, dear, Mr. Slavin, you asked him, pause.
I'm sorry.
We maintain a full-time mayor and the city, all the city employees report to the city manager, who then in turn reports to the mayor as the chief executive.
With the exception of?
With the exception of the assessor, finance office, and city clerk's office.
Did you get that? The assessor is not included in the first motion.
All right, then take him out, that's, need the assessor.
Does, does, do you have, do you have a motion? Mr. Hare, this listener is asking, in your motion, the city manager remains to be appointed by-
Appointed by council, yes.
That's clarifying. Um, Madam Clerk, would you please read back the motion? And if it fragments, stop it, and we're gonna get, we're gonna get something that's not fragmented, you would have been-
We have more than one motion?
The motion is to maintain a full-time mayor who will be the chief executive of the city. All departments, excluding the city clerk's office and the finance department, will report to the city manager. The city manager, who will be appointed by the city council, will report to the mayor.
That's the motion. Madam Clerk, call the roll. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Persa?
I don't think we're ready to vote on this yet. Do I have to vote?
Yeah, but that would be a no, sir, if you don't wanna vote on it.
I, I don't feel we're ready to vote, I, I support parts of that motion, I don't think I support all of the motions, so no.
Mr. Slavin?
Feel the same way about, as Mr. Persa does, I'd like to be recorded as not voting on this.
Would you like to be recorded as not voting, or a no, Mr. Persa?
Not voting, I'll clarify after the vote.
Okay. Thanks. Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
This is one. Yes. Motion, Hare is five. I believe, five with two passes, pass. Six, would be six with two passes.
Five with two.
Five with two, three, five, I'm sorry, five with two passes. All right, we now, I now need you to entertain a motion, or I would entertain a motion to adopt a special council minute, uh, meeting minute of February nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen, and that's probably the most anticlimactic thing I can, I can possibly entertain right now. Go ahead, Mr. Slavin, would you like to make the motion for your committee?
I don't think we're ready for that motion. Yeah, I'll get to it.
Then I'm gonna have to pass.
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hare is unanimous. Item four, Legislative Finance Administration Committee Report, February twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, replenishment of the uninsured expenses related to the settlement of the Dover Police Department grievances. Again, Mr. Slavin, do you wanna, you wanna brief us on this line?
Thank you, at the, uh, February twenty-third meeting of the Legislative Finance Administration Committee, we had an item on the agenda about replenishing the uninsured expenses related to the settlement of the Dover Police Department grievances. These were the grievances that we had to make a cash, cash settlement out of, uh, city funds, and, um, Mrs. Mitchell will help me out, but we keep it out of a reserve fund for such legal settlements that we, we might have to incur throughout the year, and our financial policy requires us to then go back in and replenish that. Uh, so the item was brought forward by Mayor Christensen, I'm not sure if he wants to speak to the issue right now, about, no. The committee passed it on with no recommendation to council.
What's, what's the pleasure of council? Does the council want to hear what the mayor has to say about this?
I, I would ask Mrs. Mitchell if she could just kind of summarize the replenishment issue and the financial policy.
Yeah.
And refresh everyone's memory about the amount that was paid.
Right, it was, uh, three hundred thousand dollars, and it, we had pulled it from, um, for the settlement, we pulled it from the contingency reserve, which is for emergency purposes, and in the budget ordinance that was presented during the last meeting, um, we actually were able to replenish that money from the, um, carry forward balance from last fiscal year's budget, we had, uh, projected, what we projected to carry forward, um, was, um, greater than what we, less than what we actually carried, uh, greater than what we actually carried forward, so we had excess money, and we replenished the reserve, and it was in the first reading of the budget ordinance in the last meeting, and the final reading is on this budget, um, agenda, or on this agenda, so if that budget ordinance goes through the second reading, the money will have been replenished by the end of this meeting.
Any questions for Mrs. Mitchell? Mr. Persa?
What happens if we say no?
If you say no, then it is not replenished and it goes back into the budget balance.
What does that mean?
It means that the budget balance would actually be, um, over the required balance, but it's not prohibited to be over the required balance, but it would go back into the budget balance for this year, and carry into next year if it's still there.
Mr. Hare?
As a, as a result of this, we also had additional expenses for a special election. Now what, how much did that cost? Does Miss McDowd, you know, how much a special election costs?
I think it's between ten and twelve.
The, the last one.
The last one.
A sing- a single election, citywide, costs approximately ten thousand.
So the special would be about ten, regardless?
Special mayor, yes.
Special mayor, yes.
So, that, is that money replenished anywhere?
That would have just been covered in, that was done last fiscal year or this fiscal year? Last fiscal year. So, that would have been covered in the, in the carry forward. We would already account it for that, so it's, it's already taken care of.
Okay, so... That one baffles me, but, okay.
I guess, I got a question. Why is this here? What are we doing with this? I thought we did this at the last meeting. Why is it back?
It's back because Legan-Fenn brought it back without a recommendation. This is...
And we've spent the money, right? We're just trying to decide how to budget it, to put it in the right column?
It's an alternative on how to get the money, how to capture the money, I believe. Right, Mrs. Mitchell?
I think it's an alter, it's basically for you to say whether you wanted that money to come out of the, in the budget ordinance, as I have it now, being replenished, or whether you don't want to replenish it. I think that's where you're at. If you accept, if you accept this budget ordinance as it's on here tonight, it would replenish it. If not, then you would need to act on this item, I would think.
And then, the impact that that means, what? We're cutting something that's three hundred thousand dollars, or...
No, you're just going to have an extra three hundred thousand in your carry forward balance, unless you make a motion to put it somewhere else.
I mean, generally, if the accounting people are telling us to do something, more or less, I'm going to do whatever the accounting people tell us to do. What impact does it have on which column does it go in, in terms of what we're going to do?
If you approve it as it is in the budget ordinance, there is no impact. If you don't approve it as it is in the budget ordinance, it just sits in the general fund, fund balance, or you could decide if you guys want to, you could decide to put it somewhere else, like a capital asset reserve or something like that. It doesn't have...
So, if we say no, we can put the three hundred thousand somewhere else?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, you could do that.
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. Please direct this to Mrs. Mitchell. What is, now with the storms and everything we've had, what is our contingency balance right now?
The contingency balance is around, I think, four hundred and, four hundred and fifty or sixty thousand. And that is, we haven't taken any storm money out of there. We've been covering that right now in the current budget. So, nothing has, the only thing that's come out of there in the last two years is, is this money.
Now, how, when it comes to our normal standards, how does four hundred thousand, put that in context? The normal standard that we keep?
It's, it's below the required two percent balance. The three hundred thousand would bring it back almost up to the three hundred thousand. It's still going to be a little, or two percent balance, it's going to be a little shy of it. But the policy reads that if it's not up to the balance, you bring it in line in next year. So, we would end up having a budget for this anyway, in next year's budget, to get it back to where it needed to be.
Does it affect our bond rating or anything if we didn't? What would be, is there any impact?
There's no impact on the bond rating, it's just policy compliance.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Pleasure of council. Mr. Anderson?
I, the president, I mean that we follow staff recommendation, replenish the contingency fund.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
Second.
It's not second, it's already, is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Hutchinson? Any discussion on the motion? Madam Clark? Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Persa?
No.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries, six to one. Next item on the agenda is item four C, proposed resolutions. Resolution number two oh one five dash oh two, requesting the General Assembly to amend Article Five miscellaneous provisions, Section fifty-three, mayor to be the conservator of the peace with companion ordinance. Two oh one five dash oh six, amending chapter sixty-two, law enforcement, Article Two, police department, Section sixty-two dash thirty-two, chief of police, generally, and Section sixty-two dash thirty-eight, special police. The committee made no recommendation on this matter, so this, so that it can be fully heard at this council meeting. Again, Mr. Slavin.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Given the fact that we've passed a motion that would effectively set the wheels forward, moving forward on a series of charter amendments and ordinance cleanup, I would think that the prudent thing to do would be to refer this back to Legislative Finance Administration Committee, and allow the clerk to then incorporate it into the work of one big omnibus charter change.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Second.
Second. Motion's been made, and second, discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, is this a roll call? Roll call, please. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Persa?
Nah.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Item number six, setting of the property assessment appeals. Staff recommends that the appeals be set for May twenty-sixth. I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself.
Did we just do that for C one and C two?
Yes, I'm sorry, I went to C, I went from C one right over to C two.
If it's, if it's procedurally correct, I would dispense with the reading of the item.
That's fine with me.
And put a motion forward that we do, refer the item back to Legislative Finance.
Second.
For inclusion in the omnibus.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Madam Clark? Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Persa?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries unanimously. I was actually on the right track to begin with. Thank you, Mr. Slavin. Item number six, setting of the property ass...
I'll give you a motion to accept the report.
Oh, motion to accept the report, yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can I do number six yet?
Move to accept.
You know you have to look at, you have to look at Tracy, she's...
Setting of property assessment appeals. Staff recommends that appeals be set for May twenty-sixth through May twenty-ninth, two thousand and five, from nine AM to four PM, June first through June fifth, two thousand and fifteen, I said two thousand and five, it's two thousand and fifteen, from nine AM to four PM, and one evening, if needed, back to two thousand and five.
Sorry.
Please note, the hearing times are subject to change. What is the pleasure of council?
Move to accept.
Motion's been made, and seconded, Mr. Anderson.
As I have a, I know from the last property assessment, I've heard some complaints about accessibility, and I, I think one evening's a little bit stretching it, and to make it optional, I think is, is something that I would like to move to amend it, to say, and one evening time be set. I don't want to see it optional. I think at least one evening should be included in this motion.
Any other discussion? Is that a motion, Mr.?
It's a motion.
Is there a second to the motion?
What if it's not needed?
It will be.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, final reading proposed ordinance. First reading of the following proposed ordinance was accomplished during the council meeting of February twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen. Copies of the proposed ordinance are available at the entrance of the council chambers.
Point of order? Have we voted on the final, on the motion itself now? We pass the amendment?
Yeah.
It's all good.
Okay.
Want to write pass?
Okay, that's fine.
I'm just trying to get to the end of the meeting, Mr. Anderson. I'm trying to go hard. First, I will entertain a motion to consider the final reading by title only, which is... Thank you. A separate meeting motion will be necessary for the adoption. Is there a second to the...
Second.
Title only, thank you. Two thousand and fifteen dash oh five, fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, second budget amendment. Mrs. Mitchell? Polling upon you to review the amendment.
Yes, the budget ordinance had, actually, the first reading was last time, but the budget ordinance had in it the project changes, the budget balance changes, and it had in there the carry forwards from the audit, based on the audit. And then we'd asked to have the three hundred thousand put back into the contingency reserve. Sixty-five thousand was approved to go to the, what was that, Scott, the sixty-five?
Sixty-five was...
You'll have to excuse me, I was, I did the first reading, I didn't think I had to do this again during the second reading, so I'm lost.
We have, it's a repeat of what's been said, right? So, I don't think we need it. We can wait for the reading and know what's been said.
Mrs. Mitchell, do you have anything more to add than what you've already said?
No, it was still the same as what was in the first reading. Okay.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the report. Adopt the, is this, is this, accept the report or adopt the ordinance?
Adopt the order.
All right, any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, Madam Clark? Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Persa?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mrs. White? Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Gentlemen, we are on the eighth and final item on this agenda. I thought we'd never get here, I think it's been a lifetime since the meeting started. Does anybody have any brief statements with announcements? Mr. Hutchinson?
The City of Dover Municipal Election will be held on Tuesday, April twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen, between the hours of seven AM and eight PM. The polling place for voting districts is the Elks Lodge, number nineteen oh three, two hundred Salisbury Road, Dover, Delaware, one nine nine oh four. For information about the candidates, absentee voting, and election, please visit www.cityadover.com and click on the election, two thousand and fifteen.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. Mrs. Townsend, did you have a...
It's awesome.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. We have a congratulations to give out to one of our local downtown operations, the Center for Mental Wellness, has received a major grant for suicide prevention for teenagers, which will be marketed to the, to the schools to provide services all across the state of Delaware. This is something that is needed. It's something that we've seen with the polytech situation that is desperately needed here, and I'm very pleased to say that, that one of our local downtown operations is being a positive part in affecting the future of the state.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Any other members of council, announcements? Seeing none, Mrs. Townsend has something she would like to announce.
I just wanted to let members of council and members of the public know that we will be holding two additional public workshops on Wednesday, March eleventh, at eleven o'clock, and four o'clock, here in council chambers, on the Downtown Development District. The first round of workshops was very well attended, in spite of the weather not wanting to cooperate, and we wanted to make sure that those who couldn't make it here for the weather had an opportunity to hear about all of the things we have to offer here in downtown Dover.
Thank you, Mrs. Townsend. Seeing no other announcements, we stand adjourned.
Okay.
Thank you.
Move to adjourn.